Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, November 6, 2017. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh Canada." Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the visuals of our country and to a former member of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir and one of the members of the Men of Note group in Grand Prairie for the audio. That's a fast-paced way to start off our new council term. Welcome to council meetings for our first business meeting of this new council term. Looking forward to getting going and let's start with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, item 3.1. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, September 18, 2017.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Were there any errors or omissions that we needed to amend before we adopted that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take us to item 3.2, the minutes of the special city council meeting. Councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had moved that we make a motion to adopt the, or sorry, to approve the special minute council meeting from Monday, September 25, 2017.
Thanks very much, Councillor Plot. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And then finally, this is one that everybody who's actually in attendance for, item 3.3, the organizational meeting of this council term from Monday, October 23. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we adopt the minutes of the council organizational meeting held Monday, October 23.
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Does it look like everybody got appointed to the committees that they were supposed to? That's what we all remember anyways, eh? Okay. Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Finally, that will bring us to a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Could I have a motion for item number four to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Well, thank you very much. This takes us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular meeting of city council for any member of the community to come forward and make a presentation at council on any community-related matter. We do always appreciate it when people call ahead of time and let us know that they're coming, and we do have a couple of those delegations tonight, but the opportunity does exist if somebody wanted to come forward from the floor as well. So we will start with our delegations in order that they're listed on our agenda. And the first is a delegation from the Shores and Ms. Margaret Gagnon. Ms. Gagnon, if you'd like to come forward? Sure, absolutely. So just come forward to the presenter's table, take a seat, make yourself comfortable, and if you'd just please introduce yourselves for our recording secretary and make yourself welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bill Given, councillors and city staff. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Margaret Gagnon and this is my colleague, Louise Slump.
Ruppberger.
Ruppberger.
And Ms. Gagnon, just while you're there, if you could, please make yourself comfortable and have a seat, and the microphone will pick you up actually much better for the recording.
Our third committee member, Darlene Arndt, wasn't able to be with us today. However, today we make up a group of concerned citizens from the Shores, a gated community at 8910 122nd Avenue. We represent all 52 unit holders of the complex, some of whom are in the gallery tonight. Our condo treasurer here is here as well, Dave Tredell, and if you have any questions regarding finances, he'll be more than happy to answer those as well. In the spring of this year, many of our residents became very concerned with what they saw that they deemed to be another huge increases in their property taxes. Most unit holders saw an average increase of $300, and many felt that this combined with the increases over the past two years would soon put them in a financial situation where these taxes were no longer affordable. We formed a committee over the summer, drafted a petition for the city, and Louise collected the signatures over the summer. The petition asked for a review of our mill rate, given that we felt was an unfair taxation. At the end of August, we submitted a petition to the mayor, council, city manager, and the manager of the tax department. But I think maybe our timing was a little bit wrong because the civic election was announced and we didn't seem to receive a reply until late in September. And we thought at that time that probably the current council was setting it aside for the new council to deal with. Later, in the later part of September, I received a phone call from Acting Director of Corporate Services, Susan Walker. She informed me that a previous council had held a meeting back in February 28 of 2017 whereby it was decided not to create a separate category for condominiums. When I asked what that meant, it was indicated to me that our petition was pretty much dead in the water and that the previous council had felt that everyone in the city had the same access to services regardless of where they lived. Everyone had equal access to museums, libraries, Centre 2000, and it was up to the individual to decide whether they would utilize any one given service. While this is true, we do not feel that it addressed our request, as we were speaking of a completely different kind of service. When I asked if there would be an opportunity to at least dump our snow in the wintertime on city property, she indicated to me no and justified it by saying then all the retail community would have to be allowed to dump their snow on city property. We are a not-for-profit group. We are 52 homeowners who happen to live in a gated community. We are the only gated community in the city of Grand Prairie, and yet we are lumped in with other groups like apartment condominiums, retail services, and for-profit groups. Our committee is talking about road maintenance, snow removal, water catchments, streetlights, street cleaning. These services are delivered to every individual homeowner's end of the driveway within the residential area. At the Shores, we are treated as one single family dwelling, and any services that are provided to us stop at our gate. However, our units are taxed as if these services were provided to the end of our driveway. The city does not do any snow removal or road maintenance for the complex. Street cleaning, road repairs are the responsibility of the association, as are repairs required to underwater catchments and sewer lines. Streetlight maintenance and electrical usage are also the responsibility of the association, and we contract our own garbage disposal. We do, however, receive RCMP support, emergency medical support, and fire protection in our complex. All these items are expensive. When our water catchment basement froze and cracked, the board spent upward to $25,000 to replace and repair the damage. Snow removal and hauling averaged $20,000 a year unless there's not very much snowfall. Streetlight maintenance, electrical, and garbage collection add another $6,000 to these costs. Approximately three years ago, our roadways and gutters began to shine, show signs of wear and needed to be replaced at the cost of upward $150,000. When a city catchment freezes in the city streets in a residential area of the city, the City of Grand Prairie Public Works Department sends a steam truck to defrost the catchments so they will not break. Snow removal, street cleaning, street repair are all provided to the end of the driveway for residential homeowners. Streetlines are maintained, repaired, and replaced by the city annually, even if the lamp standard is sitting at the end of an individual property homeowner. Sidewalks and roadways are routinely repaired, replaced, and maintained to the end of the driveway for residential owners. Yet our services stop at the gate, and we are taxed as if they are provided by the city to each individual driveway. Recently, the argument was provided that if residents can no longer afford to live at the Shores, they should not live there. Although our bylaws state that we are an 18-plus community, 95% of our residents are retired or semi-retired. Of these, at least 16 unit holders live alone and are widowed. Living in a gated community gives them a feeling of security. To look at these folks as wealthy is a mistake. They are simply people who worked hard, saved their money, and wanted a place to live in their old age where the grass was cut and the snow was shoved. While it's not the purpose today of my visit to lecture, counsel, or mayor, I would like to ask, when is enough enough? Taxes for all city residents are going up, and perhaps we should be focusing more on the needs of the city rather than the wants. We all know what the difference between a need and a want is and a nice-to-have. I enjoy the Eastlink Centre, Revolution Place, the public library, many parks, and walking trails. I would not dispose that these are wonderful wants the city has provided. However, since my husband and I moved to the Shores only two short years ago, our property taxes have risen $806, just in two years. At this rate, it's not sustainable. Like, you keep hitting me with $400 and $500 increases every year, I'm going to have to find another place to live. They're not sustainable for myself and not for many other residents of the Shores. We have included a few impact statements for you that I will give you together with a package that I would like you to have a look at and read so that you understand who we are and what we feel. We're not asking the city to begin providing some of these services at the Shores. We're willing to take care of our complex. However, we are asking that recognition in the form of a slight reduction in residential taxes be considered to compensate unit holders for the services not provided to the end of the driveway for our residents rather than just to our gate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and if there's any questions or concerns, we can try to answer them.
Well, absolutely. We do always appreciate that opportunity and sort of a portion of our delegation process. I always get the opportunity to ask if there are any questions for the delegation from members of council. Any questions for the delegation at this point? Okay, it looks like--
I did bring the original petition, and I did bring a folder for each council member, and the impact statements are in the folder. And if you would like to read them, that would be very much appreciated.
Sure. You could actually just give them the councillor Bressi and he can hand them, we can hand them around. We're a bit of a team here.
I'm around anyway. I need to exercise.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't see anybody ringing in with any questions from council. And so ladies, just in terms of the process that our council agenda follows, we deal with our delegation business actually towards the end. It's very near to the, well, it was sort of second-last piece of business the council deals with, so you're more than welcome to either stick around tonight and watch as it comes to that. The most likely outcome is that it would be referred to a standing committee of council to review the information and potentially the previous administration report, but that action will happen towards the end of the council meeting. So you could either follow up with council after the fact or with administration after the fact. Sure. And I'm sure that there's some contact information in here, and I'm certain we can do that. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I would also acknowledge that there are a number of other residents of the Shores. There's some that I know that they're residents of the Shores and some that I'm assuming are residents of the Shores. And so can council imagine that the presentation speaks on behalf of all the residents that are here this evening? Okay. Well, we can save you all the trouble of coming up and making your own independent presentations. We certainly want to acknowledge that there's more than just the two ladies that presented on camera that were here tonight. We do have another gentleman from the Shores, Mr. Tredell. Do you want to come forward with some additional information?
Yeah.
If you'll just introduce yourself, Dave.
Hello, yes, my name's Dave Tredell, and I live at the Shores as well. We had some discussion with a committee for last year, and it actually didn't go kind of the way we wanted. We weren't as prepared as we should have been, and unfortunately, it was one of those things that we were expecting someone else's to begin speaking, and then all of a sudden at the last minute, I did it. And I didn't feel really, really good about that. So the key points that I just wanted to make, and there's just two. One is, I got some information from my own tax information. I got no name on it or anything, so it's not, it's confidential or anything. But it's essentially from when we moved to the Shores, we bought a new house there in 2007. They built it. We moved in in October, and so our first tax year was 2008. So from 2008 to 2017, our taxes have gone up 67%, okay? And our assessment along on those same tax notices, the increase from those same 10 years was 14.4%. So taxes, of course, have kind of outpaced them dramatically. But it's not just the taxes have gone up because we realized they have to go up to pay for services and so on. So it's not that. It's that we are, as a community, though, the extra costs that we incur based on what Margaret was telling you about the garbage pickup, streetlight, snow removal, and road and curb work that we've done over the last 10 years amounts to just over $300,000 that we pay out of our pockets. So we're paying for all those things on top of paying the increased taxes which our neighbors outside our gates do not pay. And so that's what's frustrating about it is, at one time, we had heard, and it's from a former city manager, Dave Gorley, I believe his name is, had stated that at one time that the city had a reduced mill rate for condo associations or at least bareland condos, and that made a big difference to them. It was because of these extra costs that we don't have the choice of taking part in this. We have the choice of being a part of the library or whatever. Certainly, we do that, but not on these. And so I guess that's the key point I wanted to make. It's just, it's not only the increased taxes but the costs that we incur to get those same services that we're paying extra for.
And Mr. Tredell's referencing a spreadsheet that he's got there. He passed on a copy to the city clerk, who will make a copy and circulate it to council as well.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Any questions for the delegations? Again, seeing none, thanks very much, Mr. Tredell.
Thanks.
Okay. So was there anybody else that wished to come forward with new information on this topic? With any new information? So thank you very much, and again, appreciate the fact that there's more than just the presenters that we've heard. There's actually a fairly full audience. I thought it was just because you're all so excited to see our new city council. You wanted to come and see one of the first meetings, but fair enough. So we'll move on to our next delegation that had let us know in advance. I see Mr. Dan Gorman from Evergreen Park is here. Mr. Gorman, I think you have some other colleagues with you? Absolutely. So you've all seen the process. If you'll just introduce all the members of your delegation and make yourself welcome.
My name is Shelley Laznby.
My name is Rob Clayton. I'm the president of Evergreen Park or the Grand Prairie Regional Ag Society.
And who's the technology guy that you got with you there?
Dan Gorman, our general manager.
Thank you. Thanks, your worship. Thanks, everyone. I'm not sure this thing is going to come on somewhere in a minute. Thank you very much for seeing us, and I guess first I'd like to welcome all the new councillors to council and welcome the returning ones back. So yeah, great to see you all tonight, and thank you for seeing us. Rob Clayton is our board president, and Shelley Laznby is also one of our board members and is the vice chair of our finance committee as well out at Evergreen Park. And as we do or try to do now every November, we'd like to give you a quick synopsis of what's happened out at the park over the last year and gently ask you for perhaps some funding at the end of that. So I will start off and just talk a little bit about 2017 Evergreen Park. And I do apologize in advance for those of you that have heard this before. We just have to assume that some of you may have not. So we're a 1,000-acre multipurpose facility that's committed to being the most successful regional agricultural exhibition and recreation destination in northern Alberta. Just a quick picture of our place. Most people don't realize that we have over 29 buildings, 30 buildings it is now, and it's like a little mini-city out there. There's just so many activities. I promised a few of you to take you on the Gilligan's Island three-hour tour one of these days, and we will do that in the spring. We have our roots and base in Grand Prairie. It started in 1910, and continuing to this day, so much of what happens at Evergreen Park involves Grand Prairie and the surrounding area. So our attendance last year, just over half a million, and we've estimated November, December, obviously, but that, you know, using sooner numbers, the last couple of years, basically over half a million people come out to Evergreen Park to various events each year. So with a breakdown of that, we, 217, we're at the Entrec Center. Clarkson Hall was one of the exciting ones for us because up until this last year, we had one event a year at Clarkson Hall. We would, we had the Farm Family banquet. We would cook the food at the Entrec Center. We'd bring it in the back door of the Clarkson Hall. We'd bring it out as if we had cooked it there through the kitchen because the kitchen was in really, really sad shape. Most of you know what the inside looked like. We've had 39 events this year. We expect to have over 50 next year, and you know, a lot of them are internal ones, but we've had everything from weddings to celebrations of life, and it's just been a real good return for us. And you know, this 601 events internally ourselves, but with the campground, the 8,000 people there, we don't even include the minor baseball tournaments, Game Country Archers, the Evergreen Learning and Innovation Center. With everything added in together, there's over 1,200 events each year at Evergreen Park. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Rob.
So we do many fundraising events at the park. Many of you have probably seen some of them, but we'll just go through a few of them here. The Hanger Dance for Stars, Tenille's Big Hearts for Big Kids, and Tenille has raised, I think, in the neighborhood of $1.2 million over the last few years with her event at the park. GPRC President's Ball, which has been at the park for a number of years, Festival of Trees, which is coming up next week, and is a full-week-long event and has been at the park for a number of years, and is a big fundraiser for the hospital, as most of you know. Festival of Trees Gala last year was a huge success. The Northern Light Show, which is part of the Peace Draft Horse Club, also raises money and donates money to various groups around Grand Prairie and region. The Mr. Mike's Paint the Park Purple, raising money for cancer research, which is part of our horse racing. So annually, we raise, the events at our park raise about $1.5 million for local charities. A number of other annual events at the park, the Wedding Show, McGovern's Show and Sale in February, Growing the North Conference, which brings in a lot of people from all over the province and I would say even Western Canada. The East Country Agri Show, which has both ag events in the Drysdale Center as well as a trade show portion of it. Peace Wapiti Academy Grad, 4-H Club, Good Friday Services are held at Entrec Center. Peace Region Petroleum Show comes again in 2019, so it's every second year. Hunt Mania Show in the fall, Sports Expo, Home and Garden Show, and the Fall Home and Leisure Show, and the North Peace Bracket Racing Association Spring Spectacular. Dan?
Okay, so we have lots of organizations and user groups, and they have lots of events out at Evergreen Park. Of course, most people are going to be familiar with the Farmer's Market Christmas Craft Show and Sale every year. There's barrel racing. The Gym Cana Club has lots of events out there. And for the last three years, we've had the Blatchford Field of Nightmares, so that's been a great addition to Evergreen Park and lots of fun. The Prairie Dusters Drill Team. This is what we call Ellis, the Evergreen Center for Resource Excellence and Innovation, and we have busloads of city and county students from grade two and up come through and tour this center that's out at Evergreen Park. There's research and innovation being done out there, and even some of the research ideas that have been developed out there are being used around the country and even in other countries as well. They are looking to expand their footprint out at Evergreen Park, and if anyone's interested in a tour, we'd be happy to do that for you because it's really very interesting.
In the spring.
We've got lots of arena events, roping, that sort of thing. We've got MMA. This is a picture of our first outdoor MMA event. South Peace Horse Club is one of our user groups. They've held some events, the Horse Club Championships, Nighthawks Ski and Board Swap, that was just on Saturday, and of course, Stompede. Everybody's familiar with Stompede. This is one of our biggest events and our biggest user groups. They bring in so many people from around the peace country and even around the province and BC. I've heard upwards of 50,000 people attend Stompede. I would like to say thank you to the city of Grand Prairie for supporting Stompede financially this year because they're one of our biggest user groups, so that was really great to see them have some success this year. We have the horses at Evergreen Park, so this is the fun stuff that we get to do in July and August, weekends at Evergreen Park. We have lots of families coming out and attending the races, and that's really great to see that that's another family-friendly event that goes on at Evergreen Park that our citizens get to attend, including the Alberta Derby. So this was the third year that we hosted the Alberta Derby, and it's important to note that local business people put up the $50,000 purse that can be won at the Alberta Derby so that we can host it, and we've had lots of accolades for hosting it here in Grand Prairie. The Monster Trucks, we've held that. I'm sure everybody's seen the ads for that. 6,000 people coming to watch that. And the Northern Spirit Light Show, over 40,000 people attended last year, and there's a charity component to that as well. We have Troyer Town. So Troyer Town is another family-friendly event or not so much, let's say, winter-long event. People can come out, bring their families. It's something fun and safe to do in the winter. And we put in ice out at Evergreen Park, so skating rink for all of the Grand Prairie area citizens to use. And we have a section partitioned off so that young children can be safe while they have some fun and activity skating as well. Always nice to have the heated change rooms and washrooms for that. And of course, the Northern Alberta Trail Series. So we were one of a two-part series of trail run at Evergreen Park. I myself ran in it and I heard nothing but fabulous feedback about it, especially the run for children that was to raise money for a charity, which this year we raised money for the Reading University in Grand Prairie. So that was a huge success as well. I'll pass it over to Dan now.
Thanks, Shelley. I think we're all aware that Evergreen has been designated an evac centre for the region and, you know, we've been requested to feed, house and support up to 3,500 people or pets and other animals in an emergency. And obviously, that requires constant power. So we now have the backup generators on-site, we test them all the time and we're, you know, we're very pleased about that. We were actually asked this last summer to be ready and available to accept displaced people from the forest fires if required from other parts of Alberta and even BC at one point. And thankfully, we didn't have to do that, but we were prepared to do that. A couple of the newer capital projects for 2017, again, we've talked about Clarkson Hall, just a great year there. We also opened up a new family restaurant underneath in the grandstand at the end of May, just so that when people came out for events, they wouldn't have to only have food from the food trucks, they had healthier alternatives and they were, this has been serviced out of our on-site restaurant that, you know, services the casino side, but obviously, the young people couldn't go in there, so that's been very, very successful. And a few new user groups who have applied or have started there. The Polo Club, Disc Golf, it's either 19 or 27 holes that's out there. Councillor Bressi might have a better idea. It started out there and it's a temporary course. Couple of the weddings that went on this summer, people actually went out and did the Disc Golf before they had the weddings at Clarkson, so that was cool. The Indigenous Culture Events, we've been working with them for a couple of years. We've got a, one thing we've got is land out there, so we've got areas that we're negotiating with them on a more permanent basis to have them do certain things. And our Community Support Supper, this year will be the third year that we've done our Community Support Supper. And we basically, we served last year over 1,000. The first year it was 750, we're expecting between 12 and 1,500 this year. We bus people in, mostly it's from the Grand Prairie area. There's 12 buses donated by both the public school and the Catholic school systems and drivers. And we pick them up all over town, we bring them out, we feed them, five-course meal. We have bouncy castles for the kids, we give them rides through the light show with the horses and most of them have not had that experience at all. And everything is donated, all the food is donated, everything, all the manpower, the buses, the drivers, everything is donated, but we just don't advertise it. So, you know, we've talked to the paper and the radio stations, we don't, we don't, there's no radio on-site, there's no donator boards or anything like that, it's just about serving the people. And, you know, we're letting you know about it, quite frankly, just because it is a wonderful gift to the community and, you know, we've got a pretty unique area where we can set up and feed 1,000 people and it's not difficult to do. So, and we just, I just started it one year and just on a, you know, because we had an open weekend and it's just kind of gone, it's taken off. So we're very excited about that. It's our most fun event of the year and all of our staff, we tell them, "We can't pay you, but you don't have to work" and we couldn't pry them away with a crowbar. It's a pretty special weekend. This is just a picture of our team, I'm not going to name names or anything, but we're very proud of our team. Everyone's pushing the same way and a lot of you know, a lot of our people out there, our motto when you walk in our admin office is "Guest First" and we really try and live that every day, every single day. And we also have an amazing board, I say that when I'm not surrounded by board members as well, but we do have a very strong board, most of you know that, and we're very, very fortunate that way. So I'm just going to mention one quick thing, we just have a few more things to talk about, the economic impact. I think we're all aware that Evergreen Park and as many activities obviously add millions of dollars to Grand Prairie and the economy, but we did commission an economic impact study about a year and a half ago and it actually came out three weeks after our last presentation to City, so this is the first time that you've heard it. But I'm just going to turn it over to Shelley to share a few numbers, it's kind of interesting information. With all of that events that you saw up there, we began to wonder, well, what type of an impact does it have to our region and our community?
So as Dan said, with over 1,200 events and that doesn't count a lot of those things that we can't necessarily do a headcount for, we were wondering about this and it far exceeded our expectations for sure. So what you're looking at up there right now is the actual spend of people who come through or come to Evergreen Park for all of these events, including what Evergreen Park spends in the community as well. So if you notice, the visitor spending and local attendee spending is over $12,000, or 12 million, $12 million, sorry. And for almost $19 million initial spending impact. Those visitors and attendees are spending money in a variety of different areas. Most of that would be spent right in the Grand Prairie area and you can see the number up there, the 12,300,000. Lots of restaurants, accommodations, gas stations, all of that kind of thing. And this number is kind of the ripple effect of those other numbers. So in addition to the direct spending that happens on all of those things, that then means that there are jobs created and things bought and all of the other economic impacts, the gross domestic product of our province and our region. So the annual impact of that is over $43 million that, you know, those events at Evergreen Park help to promote.
Just as an aside as well, it was Richard Hudson that did the economic impact study, not just for ourselves, but for all seven regional agricultural societies in Alberta. And he's a very, you know, recognized, I won't say expert, but specialist in that field. So we thank you again for your considered support and would like to ask you for some potential financial support moving forward. We're also offering a significant marketing profile at Evergreen Park as part of this ask. We would like to ask the City to consider a transit relationship of some kind, we don't have specifics with it, but, and I, you know, we've started this dialogue, so, you know, I think a few of you have actually had this conversation with a few of us already and were wondering about the possibility of getting some type of a relationship so that we could have transit service out attending the larger events at Evergreen Park, you know, to and from the city, from the city to the park and back. And that's about as far as we've got. We don't have specifics, we realize everything comes with a cost, but we just like to get that out there because we get asked all the time and we're commissioning a small shuttle bus, which should be working and out there by the end of December, by the end of this year. We've actually got the bus now, we're just kind of refurbishing it because we could only afford a fairly weak or poor quality bus, but there will be one on the road with our name on it, so. We are requesting financial support from the City of Grand Prairie in the amount of $200,000 a year for the next five years and to go towards operational support. No matter how much we grow, not buildings, but organizations like ours are ones that are just going to always require financial support to sustain. And we're just asking you if in your wisdom you can find some money lying around that you would just love to, but a certain way, we would not refuse that offer. Marketing profile at the park, you know, just fairly standard stuff, but we do, we do have some pretty, you know, great potential for signage, marketing, our mini TVs, no-charge booths each year at the Agri-Show and just a number of other, you know, links to our website and all of that stuff that we would offer on that as well. So that is it in a nutshell. For sure, we wanted to come and let you know what we're doing, we're very excited about the growth. We had a challenging year in 2016, as did half the world, but rebounded very strongly. I will say this, Bridget Henninger gives her regrets, she had another commitment tonight, she is the head of our finance committee and wanted me to mention to you that our latest financial statement is only till the end of September, but as of the end of September, we are over budget in our revenues and we are under budget in our expenses and we're very happy with that, so. Well, thank you and open to floor to questions.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Are there any questions for the delegation? Questions for the delegation tonight? Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Great presentation, I appreciate that, it's a lot of learning, I didn't know as much about the facility, so thanks. I'm just wondering if we're going to have an opportunity to have that presentation for us to have for future use? I'm not sure if that's something that'll be available to us.
Yes, I actually sent it to you earlier today. I tried to make it really early, but we missed it. So you have it as of late this afternoon.
Okay, great, yeah. Tried to scribble notes and I'm watching, we're all scribbling, not getting them all down, so. And then my other question is, what are we currently funding to Evergreen Park now? Is there any funding currently offered by the City other than the Stompied?
Directly at Evergreen Park, currently not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Bressi.
Have we historically contributed anything financially to Evergreen Park?
No, not, we made an ask, I think, about a year ago, Mayor Given, and that was the first time, I think, in a while.
Thanks very much, it's a pretty direct answer, direct question, direct answer, it's perfect. Any other, any other questions for the delegation? Councillor Thies.
Very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for the presentation, it was, well, it was better than last year's, that's for sure, it was really, really good and very thorough. My question actually is in regards to your transit to the park. So you said that you have a bus kind of lined up, ready to go, maybe seek out future options with the City of Grand Prairie. What are you anticipating the costs on operating that bus for yourself are currently?
It is a great question that's been asked me already, we've kind of struck a little subcommittee to work on that. We literally just bought this bus about a month ago, it came up on Kijiji and Simon Jukes, I don't know if anyone remembers him from old days of Grand Prairie, owned the bus company up on a high level and let us have it for basically hauling it down here pretty well, so it's in reasonable shape. So we're just at the beginning process of that too, so I just, that's as much as I can tell you.
No, I appreciate that. Maybe you might be able to answer maybe a higher vision sort of question in that regard. How often would you prefer to have the frequency of that bus run from City to Evergreen Park?
Are you talking the transit bus or our shuttle bus?
Your shuttle bus or even, we can expand that, even if the City were to be so inclined to help out with the services like that in the future, like how frequent?
We were thinking of, I don't know, six to eight major events, maybe six to 10 major events with the transit bus, the bigger events during the year, it wouldn't be worthwhile to either of us if it was in the smaller ones. So we were, you know, discussing at one of our subcommittee meetings before, it being things like, you know, the Stompieds, the Grove de Nord, the bigger events like that. As far as our shuttle bus is concerned, we're looking at even the idea of, you know, some of the seniors would like to come out on a more regular basis when we're having little get-togethers and stuffs. Some of the hotels have indicated the same and so we're, we feel that we're, it's going to be a growth and learning thing with that, that's about as much as we've had. We've had people that have suggested that they might want to rent it if we're going to have an event at Clarkson Hall so that they've got, you know, designated driver type of a, anyway, there's a whole bunch of opportunities with that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I see Councillor Friesen.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm just curious about the operational request. With the growing revenue of the park, do you anticipate that there's going to be a time when the, when the revenue comes down or, sorry, when the operational gap or the demand for funding for operational support comes down? And also, who else do you ask for, have you asked historically for support for operational needs?
Thank you, Councillor Friesen. First, on the first question, within five years, yes. Five years ago, our long-term debt was approximately 8 million, it's now almost half that, so we've reduced it by that much. Within the next five years, we hope to be, we plan to be, you know, hopefully it's under 2 million for sure, but my goal is a little bit less than that. So within five years, significant difference on that end. We currently get some strong operational funding from the County of Grand Prairie, we get some operational help from the MD of Greenview and have from them for the last five years. And other than that, we, you know, we apply for a lot of grants, but they're non-operational grants and, yeah, that's one of the reasons that 2016 was a challenging year for us is that we applied for and got all three grants, so we had to come up with lots of matching money to make it all work and we're glad that we did. One of them was Clarkson Hall, but that's the majority of our operational.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Friesen, I don't see anybody else in the queue. So thanks very much, everybody, for your presentation this evening. You saw the process outline that I gave the last group, we deal with our delegation business at the end of the agenda. It's most likely, given that this would have a budget implication, that this would either be referred to budget or a standing committee for review, so, just for context. So you can make, based on that, you can make a choice about whether you stick around tonight and watch the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much, everybody. Okay, and we had one last delegation let us know ahead of time that they were going to present. We have Mr. McLean from Tidewater Midstream and Infrastructure Limited. And I have a feeling you have a team, at least I see a group back there, but come on up, Mr. McLean.
Mr. Entourage.
You're Entourage, you just travel with that many people, eh? Welcome, gentlemen, if you'll just introduce yourselves once you're all set there and
My name's Scott Acock, I'm Director of Storage Operations at Tidewater.
Scott, and Scott.
My name is Scott McLean, I'm Manager of Environment Health and Safety and Regulatory Good evening, Mayor Given, City Councillors and City Staff. This project was first initiated and spoken to at city level a number of times, even dating back quite some years ago, I guess. Scott was involved with that from back then, so. So tonight, we're here as Tidewater Midstream to provide Mayor and Council with an update on our project and give a bit of an overview for the new council members that may not be aware of what the project entails. So first, I'd like to start off by, who is Tidewater Midstream and Infrastructure? Because we are a relatively new organization, we were incorporated in 2015, we're publicly traded on the TSX Venture Exchange, the one piece that I don't have up there. We're approximately a half a billion dollar company at the moment. We're going to have, through a recent acquisition, roughly 300 people working for us. We're a Calgary-based organization with operations throughout the province of Alberta. We have an experienced and dedicated executive and management team. Tidewater owns and operates 35 gas processing facilities around the province. These facilities are comprised of both sweet and sour product. We own, operate and maintain thousands of kilometers worth of pipeline. And probably the most important piece to MISA health is that we are a top-tier regulatory and safety performer compared to our tiers, our peers, sorry. We are a reliable, trustworthy partner in the communities in which we operate, so also very important to us. So if I may jump into the project overview, so the project is a $200 million project. The facility is comprised of sweet gas compression, D-HI units, and this facility is located within the proposed Hughes Lake area structure. Another component of the project is our sweet gas storage reservoir and this is the use of a depleted natural gas reservoir that was on production, and Scott has the details on that, I think since early 80s.
Early 90s, yeah.
90s. So that reservoir has been depleted from sweet, sweet natural gas and we'll get into the bits of that in a little bit as far as how we're going to utilize... get into the bits of that in a little bit as far as how we're going to utilize that depleted reservoir. There's also a sweet gas pipeline, 30-inch, 22 kilometers in length that heads west of the city. And the natural gas storage, so I'd like to just chat about, a little bit about that because it seems like there's a lot of questions around natural gas storage. So natural gas storage is based on the supply and demand across North America. The way I like to discuss it, and Scott will go into probably a little bit better detail just because I'm a simple fella, think RV storage, storage yards. What we have is an empty gas reservoir and in non-high usage times, we'll be putting natural gas, sweet natural gas into that reservoir, much like an RV. You're not using your RV, where do you park it? You park it in a, an RV storage yard for a fee, right? So it's the same principle for us with our natural gas storage is when there's no, not a large demand for gas, we will take it in off the system and find a home for it temporarily until demand rises again, and then it gets put back out into the transition systems, transmission systems.
No, that's pretty good. I, I think a good analogy is also grain storage. It's just different fundamentals there. Grain production is very variable, supply is very constant, so you need storage to meet that imbalance. Natural gas would be very similar.
So again, I guess one piece that I want to just bring back, you know, to maybe elaborate a little bit more on is the facility component. That is the, the piece that is most, I guess, it's right inside the city limits there, in the newly annexed portion to the west, just on the west side of the airport there. Tidewater Midstream currently owns 80 acres, an 80-acre parcel out there, and that is the proposed location of our facility. So here, where the star is, is where we are in relation with the Hughes Lake area structure plan, and you can see the new Ring Road bypass, et cetera, that is, that's also there, so we're just on the east side of that. This, this map, hopefully you folks can see it fairly decent, this, this is really the, the whole project. Obviously where you folks are most concerned and are want to be most aware of is the components within the city limits. So the 825 compressor site is our new facility that we're proposing to build, and we've gone through the application process with provincial regulatory authority, the AER. So there's, the main components of our facility are, or the project, sorry, are the facility at 825, that's our legal land description for that, and then there's the 30-inch pipeline, which is the green line that you can see stretching out to the west, which connects us up to our Alliance connection there, which gives us a connection point basically to draw from and to sell to as, as, as demand dictates.
The, the line going, going north will then connect to Nova, so we'll, it's a unique facility in Alberta, will be the only facility connected to both Alliance and, and Nova.
Yeah, so I don't want to draw too much attention away from the, the components that are outside the city limits, because I understand you guys are most concerned probably or have most thoughts around what's inside your city limits, but the, just to give you folks a full picture of what we're actually working towards, and yeah, so the, the heart of the, the project is the facility at 825. So here's two artist renderings of what our facility will look like. The, the top one that's kind of in behind, I have another snapshot of that one that'll come up on the next slide. And then the bottom one is when, when we add trees to it, and that is our plan to have trees on the easterly edge of this, of this facility. So one, one really important piece that I'd like you folks to, to draw your attention to, on the top picture, you can see back in the, in the back corner there, there looks like a little gray box, I wish I had a laser pointer, sorry, that, that's a ground flare unit. So instead of a conventional flare stack, I'm sure you folks have seen those around the countryside, the stack with the, the flame at the top, what we've elected to do as, to minimize our impact to our neighbors, future folks that could be beside us in this proposed industrial area, is we've gone to a, a new piece of equipment called a ground flare unit. So again, you're trying to use some analogies to help folks understand, but it's basically like a big barbecue, instead of having the flare stack up in the air, this one's about 20 feet tall, 25 feet tall with the edges, and then it just has a series of burners on the inside, so there will be no flame or anything for the neighbors to see there. So expensive piece of equipment, but we felt that it was very important to move forward with our project and to, again, be a good member of the community. So there, there's just another little snapshot of what, what the facility's going to look like. You can see our existing, the 80 acres that we currently own has a home on it already. We're going to leave the home there, that's going to be a part of our, our facility as far as offices, et cetera, so you can see that on the left-hand side of the facility, just on this side of the tree line, so. Again, fully fenced, fully secured. So I guess if I could move on to the project update portion. Tidewater's been working with the AER and surrounding communities for the last several months. Roughly since January, I guess, we started the, the process of initiating this project again. We purchased the project and the, the, the idea of the project from a, from another organization, but Tidewater really kicked it into gear and seen its, its need in the last year, I guess. So we kicked the project off back in January, started meeting with AER, members of the community, and ultimately, I guess, they're folks that live within the city limits now with the new area that's been annexed in. So we've been working with those folks since January. Happy to say that we just received our regulatory approvals, AER provincial regulatory approvals on November 1st, so just last week. So that was a, a good day for us as an organization. We've been working really hard at this, at this project and working with some of the community members on the west end of the city there, so. The next step for us to get the facility going is submit our development permit for application through the city of Grand Prairie, and we expect that submission to be within days here. So we're really looking forward to continue working with the city and, and hopefully getting this, this project off the ground from, from your guys' standpoint as well. One question that's probably burning on people's mind, and maybe I can answer it ahead of the, the question period, is when are we planning on starting construction? Obviously the development permit process, we have to go through that piece. Originally, we were hoping to start our construction by the end of 2017 yet, but we're not sure yet. The AER approval timeline took a little bit longer than what we were expecting, so we have, we are evaluating our start time currently right now. We're hoping to get in and do some of the pipeline construction, which again, doesn't affect you folks with the city, but just as an awareness piece, we're hoping to get in and do some of the pipeline construction as there are some sensitive areas to the west of the city that we, we'd like to tackle in the winter season, I guess, rather than the, the spring or summer. So the facility, yeah, we're, go through the development permit process and then we'll be evaluating our construction start time from then, from there, so.
Questions? Thanks very much, gentlemen, for the presentation. Congratulations on achieving your AER approval. Any questions for the delegation? Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much. The green pipe that's leaving the facility, I know you've heard this before, what's the pressure in there? Like, I know it's not a high pressure, but what kind of pressures are we looking at?
1,200, 1,200 PSI, maybe off by 20 pounds or so. Same pressure rating as like a Nova pipeline, well, both Nova and Alliance operate around 1,200, so we need to be at that same pressure.
And you're kind of assuming that it'll be running natural gas through it majority of the time except for the odd time when it's, market's not there and you're going to store it?
Yeah, the, the pipeline will always be, be full. It'll just be, it may not be moving gas, but it'll always be full.
Okay. Well, just one more question. I, I really appreciate your report or update. Was there any consideration of, with the flare stack there, the flare, to just maybe regenerate and make power? And put it, is that something that ever come on the table? Not that it matters, I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah, no, so the, the flare stack will not have constant flare going there. It's, it's put in place for depressuring the facility for maintenance work or for emergency situations. So no, there's not a, a constant flow of gas to that facility.
Thank you.
Or to the flare stack, sorry, or flare.
Thanks Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Plott.
Thanks Mayor Given. Thanks, guys, for the report. It's exciting to see something like that maybe coming into the city limits at some point here, so I guess a couple of questions I had is how long would we be looking at storing the gas in the facility? Like, is there, is there a length of time where you can't be stored no longer, or?
Yeah, so, so gas storage is, so, so I'll start with the reservoir a little bit. It produced 100 BCF, so, so really we're licensed to store 100 BCF back into the reservoir. 35 of that would be what we deem to be cushion, so that's always going to stay in the reservoir, and we need that cushion in there to provide enough pressure to get the gas out at acceptable rates to meet industry demand. So really we'll be working with 65 BCF, and that 65 BCF will have the ability to be cycled annually, so 65 in the ground in a year and 65 out within that same year. So, so, so really you're, you're, you're looking to meet the summer/winter demand, summer being oversupplied and winter typically being undersupplied, so, so we work to, to help make up that imbalance.
Thank you. And then I guess you guys are hoping to start construction here, you know, maybe, maybe early 18, late 17. When were you hoping to be operational with this facility?
With, with the whole facility, really we're hoping for Q1 2019, Q2 2019, April 2019. So the storage year would tend to start April, where you begin injecting and then be available for withdrawal in November.
Thanks, guys.
Counselor Minhas.
Thank you very much Scott for you guys' information and updating the project. My question is to, when this construction starts, how many people will be working and when this project is run, how many people will be employed afterwards running?
So the, the construction phase will obviously ramp up as there will be quite a number of folks. The pipeline, I think, will probably have roughly 50 to 60 folks on the pipeline side, and I'm guessing probably the same to construct the facility itself. Full-time staff there. Our initial plans are, I believe, around that four to six permanent staff, just working at that facility, but that doesn't take into account some of the support staff that will also be probably needed in the Grand Prairie area as far as supervisory staff, administrative staff, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, thanks Counselor Minhas. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Gentlemen, I did have one question. I don't know whether it's possible for you to know this at this time or not, but do you foresee with your development permit, looking forward, do you foresee any need to request any variances? Or does it look like it's, have you had a chance to have that kind of analysis yet?
Not that I'm aware of, but I guess we've, we have an engineering team working on our development permit with us, so nothing that I'm aware of, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much Mayor Given. Thanks for coming in and for your presentation, gentlemen. I just had a couple of questions, things that weren't touched on. One's clarity for myself. When we're talking about the gas storage, is this above ground or below ground?
Below ground. The reservoir's about 1,300 meters below ground.
Perfect, and are there any risks associated with that? And the reason why I ask is over the last two years, I've, I've had lots of phone calls from residents in the area and also residents directly in the city who have expressed concerns about the safety of putting a plant so close to the city, and I just wanted to know if you guys could ease, ease those concerns live and in person.
Yeah, I, I guess, like any project like this, there are certain risks associated with it. We deem the risk to be quite low. We put a lot of mitigation strategies inside of our facility to mitigate those, mitigate those concerns and, and, and that risk itself. One thing that we're proposing over and above what's expected from regulation is installing subsurface safety valves in the wells. So that's a downhole safety valve, so if there's ever an issue of the surface equipment, there's a downhole emergency shutdown valve that will shut for those wells, which again is over and above expectation. We have a number of systems inside the facility as far as flame detection, gas leaks, et cetera, so we have a number of components put in place in our plans that mitigate any of those risks and really drop it down to an equitable amount and an amount that we're comfortable with.
All right, and just, oh, looks like you had.
I, I was just going to sort of add the, you know, I, I believe the AER is, is one of the top regulators probably worldwide. You know, there's, there's very regular, rigorous sort of things we need to do when we drill wells and, and testing of the wells prior to putting them into service for a storage application, and, and we're, you know, we work hard to be in compliance with all of that and ensure that we are.
Awesome, and just one final question. Once operational and constructed, how long would you be able to operate the plant? Are we talking 40 to 50 years, 100 years, 20 years?
Yeah, I would say 50 to 100 years likely. It, it should be a long-term facility provided there's a, a demand for natural gas.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thanks Counselor Thieson. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here tonight to update the new council at the very start of its term on your project. Looking forward to, I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you and Tidewater over the coming years and months, but thanks very much for being here at the very start.
And I actually do have a few pamphlets that I'll pass around as well.
Sure, please. Thank you. Again, you could maybe just leave them with Mr. Olenger right here to your right, and he can circulate them to council. Thanks very much, gentlemen. Okay, I think that's handled all of our delegation business. As I look out through the crowd that's still assembled in the council chambers, it doesn't look like there's anybody else that's going to be coming forward, but this opportunity does exist. We do always appreciate if people let us know ahead of time that they'll be coming. So we'll move on through our agenda. We have no items under public hearings, we have no items of unfinished business, and so that takes us to item 8.1, Development Authority Appointments, and I think we have a recommendation from administration to make some appointments of development officers. Mr. Wright, are you going to introduce this for us?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor Given and members of City Council. My name's Stuart Wright, the Development Permitting Supervisor. This is a request for appointment of development officers. In August of this year, Rhonda LaFaye retired after serving with the city for 25 years. Ms. LaFaye spent most of that time as the lead senior commercial and industrial development officer. So we did look to recruit thereafter, and we have hired Mr. Eugene Tobin. Mr. Tobin does come with extensive experience in municipal government and other fields. He has 16 years' experience in advancing roles in municipal government. He worked for the city of Corner Brook in Newfoundland in the role of Development Officer and Senior Development Officer. Thereafter, he moved to Strathcona County where he worked as a Senior Development Officer. Most recently, Mr. Tobin was working in Saddle Hills County where he was working in planning, development and engineering roles. Mr. Tobin's additional experience is in building safety codes, GIS, engineering infrastructure and enforcement of land use bylaws. He also has professional designations in planning and development and is a certified engineering technologist. The second part of this request. The second part of this request is somewhat less interesting because it's about me in the role of Development Permitting Supervisor. It's not typically in that position where you would sign off and issue development permits. However, looking at this and the expectations, certainly with the economy going to be picking up and, um, just to provide that potentially for more complex projects, administration is seeking council support to actually authorize me to be development officer as well, to be able to sign and issue permits. So Section 624 of the Municipal Government Act states that council must provide for a development authority. Section 11.3 of the City's Land Use Bylaw states that the development authority shall be the Development Officer Committee or where the context of the bylaw permits City Council. And Section 12.2 of the Land Use Bylaw states that the person or persons to fill the office of development officer shall be appointed by resolution of council. Therefore, administration recommends that Ms. Eugene Tobin and myself, Stuart Wright, be appointed by resolution of council to the role of development officer for the purpose of administering the land use bylaw. And if council has any questions, I'd be glad.
Thanks very much, Mr. Wright. So council, we have that introduction from administration. I don't know if there are any questions at this time, but if not, I'd look for a motion as recommended in our package. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that council appoint Mr. Eugene Tobin and Mr. Stuart Wright as development officers in accordance with the requirements of the Municipal Government Act and Land Use Bylaw C-1260.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. So we'll move on to item 8.2, and I'll look to our city manager for a brief introduction of this item.
I heard the operative word, Mr. Mayor, is being brief, so I will make it so. I have a similar announcement to make or a similar recommendation to make to the council tonight. This one involves our Susan Walker. As council, I'm sure is aware, uh, earlier this year, Ken Anderson retired as our Chief Financial Officer and Director of Corporate Services, and a recruitment commenced to find a replacement for Ken. That recruitment was national and done using a headhunter out of Calgary to make sure that we had the very best candidate for our organization here in Grand Prairie. At the conclusion of that search and that selection process, Susan Walker was selected to be our Corporate Services Director and Chief Financial Officer. I think you've all met Susan. She has had a long and and very distinguished career in the city of Grand Prairie. In fact, nobody knows the organization better than Susan. The leadership team has welcomed her as part of the leadership team. Part of the process, though, according to Bylaw C-1277, Section 3.2, that being the City Administration Bylaw, is that Susan should be appointed Corporate Services Director as a designated officer. And there are certain roles and responsibilities that come with that designation. So with respect to Mr. Mayor, I would ask that that recommendation should be honored.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. City Manager. Uh, any questions or motions arising? Counselor Thiessen.
Just a motion if there are no questions.
Please.
I like to do this as soon as possible. Uh, it's with great pleasure that I would move that council appoint Ms. Susan Walker as the Corporate Services Director as a designated officer effective October 1st, 2017, pursuant to Section 3.2 of Bylaw C-1277 being the City Administration Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. There we go, and congratulations, Ms. Walker. Welcome to the team, or welcome back to the team. Then that'll take us to item 8.3. There was a administrative oversight or an oversight, excuse me, at our council organizational meeting. There is one organization that we are required to make an appointment to um, as a part of the structure of the organization. That's the South Peace Regional Archives Society. And so this wasn't in the list of mayor's recommendations at our organizational meeting. I am recommending to council that you would approve Counselor Plott as council's representative to that organization. And this would form one of our regular reports at regular council meetings. Uh, and so I would look for a motion to, uh, pass that recommendation. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we approve the mayor's recommendation to appoint Counselor Plott to the South Peace Regional Archive Society.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, and that'll take us to 8.4, Subdivision and Development Appeal Board, Temporary Member, Temporary Public Member Appointments. And I don't know if we have a member of administration that wants to introduce this, but council does have a need to appoint a minimum of two public members to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for temporary terms for the exclusive purpose of one specific meeting coming up December 4th. Ms. Williams, how did I do on that? Was there anything else that we need to cover?
That's pretty much it, Mayor Given. We do have the need for three board members to be appointed for a special Development Appeal Board hearing that will be happening in December. So we do recommend that there are three members being appointed to this.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I would look for a motion. Counselor Thiessen.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just for a bit of context, there was five applicants that put their name forward, and we have chosen three, even though we only have to select the two minimum. Uh, and to that extent, I would move that council appoint Lynn Culture, Cheryl Shundell, and Alan Tibbles as alternate members to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for the purpose of attending the S D A B hearing scheduled for December 4th, 2017, in compliance with the consent order of the Court of Appeal of Alberta.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, that handles all of our items of reports and would take us to committee business. And as I was looking at this, I thought, well, aren't we lucky that the two council members that were chairing the two committees that we have coming to this agenda actually are still on council? That worked out pretty well. Uh, the first is Counselor Clayton with item 9.1, Community Growth Committee Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So kind of fittingly, it'll be the last time that I make this motion, actually, with the restructure of committees. So I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held Tuesday, September 19th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, and we'll move to 9.2, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting. Counselor O'Toole.
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, just get your microphone there. Better. Sorry. I move the council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting held Thursday, October 5th, 2017, as presented. And to speak of that, uh, we had a bunch of money. We gave a bunch out. And with that, we gave some money towards athlete travel funding, coach travel, clinic hosting. We gave away an award to Morel Martins as the Perky Malkala Award and split with the Bob Newfeld Award tomorrow, Dee and Zachary Malmstrom. And we said it ran the pot dry.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Well, that's certainly what that fund is for, to support our athletes as they progress in their careers. Thank you very much. Uh, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. That handles all of our committee business for this evening, I believe, and takes us to the last few items. Uh, we have no items of correspondence, but item 11 is delegation business. And we did have our three delegations, the residents of the shores, condominiums, Mr. Gorman and his team from Evergreen Park, and Mr. McLean from Tidewater. And so I would look for a motion dealing with each of those. My recommendation to council would be that, um, that they be generally, the first two certainly would be probably most appropriate to refer them to the appropriate standing committee. I think the last one was something that we'll be hearing more about as it comes, was probably more just for information. So, uh, but we'll deal with them one at a time. So Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the recommendation to send the the first delegation from the shores gated community to the appropriate standing committee.
Sure, just to refer that issue for review to the appropriate standing committee.
Sure.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on that motion? I guess just for council's information, as they acknowledged at the start, there was a present, a report written by administration. So administration would have an opportunity to bring that report back uh, to the standing committee. Council could review that and see if there was any additional information or or different direction that would need to be taken at that point. So just in terms of process. Any other discussion or debate? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So our next delegation was the presentation from Evergreen Park. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I may do two motions for this one, uh, but the first one being that I would move that the, uh, that, sorry, council, refer the option of transit to Evergreen Park to the appropriate standing committee.
Okay, okay. You want to deal with the two sort of separately?
Yeah.
Independently? Okay, sure. Um, they were distinct things. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and Counselor Clayton.
I have a question in regards to process, um, these appropriate standing committees. If there's any budget implications meet between now and the budget discussion, uh, what are the opportunities for some of these discussions to get to the budget discussion starting November 15th?
Yeah, yeah, I think I think probably fair to say that that would be pretty challenging. That may be why Counselor Thiessen is making a distinction with the second motion. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you, Counselor Clayton. That's exactly what I was getting at. I didn't think that we had enough time to address the funding request to Evergreen, and that's totally in the purview of council to do that. So in saying that, I would move that we refer, uh, the request for $200,000 for next year to budget deliberations.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. That motion's open for discussion and debate. Uh, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, and then we had our final presentation from Tidewater. And again, I I think that's most likely just one to be received for information. I think that's the context it was provided in. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that we accept the report given by Tidewater as information.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you.
It's Tidewater Midstream Infrastructure Limited.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole, and that motion carries. Uh, I think that deals with all of our delegation business. Uh, we have no notice of motion this evening, and I think we have only a couple of council member reports. And this section is an opportunity for council members to report on any external bodies or committees that they may represent the city of Grand Prairie on. And I think we'll start with Counselor Thiessen. I think you said that you had Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance?
Uh, yes, I sure did. We don't, I don't have actually much to report. I was just happy that we had an opportunity to have this meeting. Largely, uh, it was just your standard meeting, couple of updates from administration on the workings within the office, uh, and outside of the office as far as promoting our integrated watershed management plan. Uh, we also had guest speaker Andrew Schopf, uh, the Acting Service Delivery Coordinator uh, for Community Engagement for A E P, uh, talking about W P A C's roles and the review of community-based monitoring updates. And we had a thorough discussion in and around that. We also received further, uh, updates on our integrated watershed management plan, which, uh, I did, for new counselors, uh, put this out on your desk in the back, and I think I want in the mailbox. I strongly encourage you to review it if you can. Uh, it addresses the Peace River and and all of its tributaries that flow in and around Grand Prairie in the Peace region. Uh, we're looking for feedback by November 15th. So hopefully read it before we get into budget deliberations because by November 15th, we'll be right in the middle of it. Uh, so if you have an opinion, uh, now's the time to do it because, uh, if there is no negative feedback, we will take this draft and put it right into action. Finally, we did touch on strategic plan review. And we made some notes that it needs to be updated from when it was originally created in 2010, especially since one of our two main goals was creating a state of the watershed report, which is done, and the other being creating an integrated watershed management plan, which is in the final phases of its draft presentation. So that should be done and ready for implementation soon. And that is all I have for Mighty Peace. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Um, and then next up was Counselor Blackburn, and I think you had Grand Spirit Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Grand Spirit Foundation Board Meeting last week, and primarily, we were talking about the work done on, um, Lakeview, which is the new facility in Clermont. For the most part, it was a follow-up on deficiencies and so on. And there, uh, there's also some capital work yet to be done. They're looking at building a storage garage and, uh, and a couple of other facilities that will help with the operation. It was a good meeting. People on that board are very passionate about about the residents throughout their region. And, uh, the only other thing I'll mention is that next month, December 1st, is their A G M. And then we'll have a look at what's up for the next year.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn, and Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, although I haven't been to a meeting, I just wanted to let everybody know that tonight at midnight is the deadline. If you're looking to buy Nighthawk season passes, the, uh, the rate goes up tomorrow. So if you're looking for a season pass, and they've also introduced, I saw on their website, options for monthly payment this year. So for those who want to buy a family pass for the hill, they'll take a installment over four months. So it goes up after midnight tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton, and Counselor Plott.
Although I missed the meeting for the, oops.
You're on.
Although I missed the meeting for the Downtown Association, um, I did get some notes from it. Um, so I just want to bring to attention just a few of the the keynotes that were, that the last Downtown Association meeting had. Decreased planning width of the sidewalks, decreased size of the corner ball boats, include art-inspired crosswalks, improved communication, which is also, I mean, I guess when I was out campaigning, that was definitely something that was brought up a lot. The assistance with signing, um, and how do we get to businesses during construction? Uh, included some kind of a construction cost for the installation of backflow preventers or equivalent where necessary. And also the city looking at having a project manager on this. So just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
Thanks, Counselor Plott. Uh, I think if that's all of our external agencies, boards, and commissions, then we'll start with Councilmember Roundtable, uh, where council members can report on some of the activities that they've attended to represent the city of Grand Prairie. And we'll start with Counselor Bressi. You'll just have to start your microphone, though.
Like that? Oh, there we go. There we go. Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I want to acknowledge this is a privilege. This is a lot of fun, guys, to do this with you. So thank you for being here. An event I went to is I spend a lot of time at skate parks. I don't skateboard, but I spend a lot of time getting to know teenagers in skate parks as my, part of my other job. And so I went to the skateboard, skate park master planning session. And something I want to bring to your awareness is that this has been brought forward by a number of older skateboarders who are more my age, who are really determined to have something for the younger kids in our community. They want to teach them how to skate. They want to teach them some life skills. They want to have something positive for younger kids in this community. That's what this is about. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about the skateboarding master plan, and I hope that we can support it.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I did a number of events in the last two weeks. But one I'd like to bring to attention is I had the opportunity to take my oldest granddaughter to work for the day. And that was organized through the city manager's office and his assistant. And we ended up going through all the city hall, everything from taxation, which my granddaughter wasn't all that keen on. She didn't know much, thought that part was boring. But we all threw, went through the G I S department and how the the maps were done and how the underwater, underground services were. And that she thought was kind of neat. We went through the city services building, and we got to see some of the, uh, the jobs, the different areas of the city, uh, used to operate the city. And then the final part was we got to go underneath the 25-meter pool at the East Link Center and see the workings and how the, how the system is cleaned and monitored and maintained and got to see, uh... and how the, how the system is cleaned and monitored and maintained, and got to see, have good conversation with all the staff at all the different areas. So it was a real eye-opening experience for my granddaughter. And I want to thank all the staff, city manager, and making that a great day for my granddaughter.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just bring up a couple of events that I don't think any other councillor member, members were at. I attended the, I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council at the Ronald McDonald House Superhero Sorae. It was a great event. I had never personally been to the event, and lots of family fun. I took my kids, and they raised lots of money. And there was fun for kids and a kids' dance, but also great stories from the successes of that facility. So I was very happy to be at that event. As well, I attended the Nighthawk Alpine Ski Team Annual Fundraiser this past weekend. They moved it to the Golden Age Center, which was a great facility for that event. And one other event I attended, I think councillor Friesen was there, and councillor Minhas, the Grand Prairie Regional College President's Ball. If anyone else was there, I apologize. It was an annual event, and from all, from all word I hear so far, the, the numbers were great this year, and they raised a lot of money. So that was it for this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Councillor Minhas.
Yes, I was with Jackie on the president's ball. We had good fun there. And also, I was quite busy with our community thing and our church, and we did a few things. So I didn't go any other places, because we just start up. So that's about it.
Thanks very much, councillor Minhas. Councillor Friesen.
Thank you. I attended three days of council orientation.
Where was everybody else?
I don't know. Everyone was there. That was fantastic. I just want to thank administration for putting that together. I thought that was really valuable. In addition to that, I went to the art gallery preview for this upcoming year. And what I'm most excited about there, there will be a student-curated show upcoming. And where was the student from? You were there. Was it, is it a GPRC student or GPRC? Yeah. So that's, that's something to look forward to. I attended Legion Open House on the 25th of October, and Pards dine and dance this weekend, as well as the president's ball. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Friesen. Councillor Pilat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess I had a few events. The first one was the breakfast with the guys at Howlers, which was, which was a great event. And it sounds like it was one of their better-received events in previous years. So that was, that was good. Legion Wine and Cheese was interesting as well. It was an interesting event. Probably my highlights for the last couple of weeks were the county recreational plan out at Intrex Center. They had a really good turnout. I would say well over 100 people over there. And a lot of very passionate people. Of course, when you're talking about recreation, there's lots of passionate people. But I think there's a really cool opportunity for the city to maybe looking at getting involved with that at some point. I think it's going to have a lot of potential for, you know, off-leak dog parks, you know, as, as the plan builds in, I think it's going to be a really good regional facility. And then on the weekend, I attended the Pards fundraiser, which I don't, hadn't been to that fundraiser in the past. Some, some very amazing speeches, well, well-received. I don't know what their targeting goals for, for, for funds earned, but it sure seemed like the auction pieces were going well, and people were having fun. So I think it was a good event, and hopefully they achieve their goals.
Thanks, Councillor Pilat. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Two events that I attended over the past little while are the art gallery season preview and breakfast with the guys. And they've both been spoken to eloquently already. I won't repeat the points.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Blackburn. Councillor Thiessen.
Well, it looks like we're all attending the same meetings. Councillor O'Toole's giving me the gun sign, because I did a lot of events over the last little bit. He told me I could only speak to one, so I'm only going to speak to one, because I don't want to turn into Old Yeller with Councillor O'Toole here in the back. So the event I'm going to speak to is Festivale, as part of the Scarecrow Festival's offerings to the community. I had the opportunity, the privilege to not only be the emcee for the event, but also to be able to give greetings on behalf of the city, since I was the only member there on city council. And as was the case with the Odyssey Houses fundraiser and the president's ball, Festivale was an incredible success. I think there was over 500 people in attendance, and the beer was flowing. The times were good, and the prizes were handed out. And I had a great time. And the members of the Sunrise Rotary Club were overjoyed with the, with the turnout and the response from the community, especially on a night where all these other great events are happening. It's good to see that coming back in our community. Finally, I just want to make mention, it is Movember. November, normally I don't grow a mustache, and I know I got this growth thing on my face right now. So part of that's for prostate cancer, same with the Terry Fox t-shirt. But I'm a man of multiple meanings here, so I'm also wearing purple, just to make everyone aware of the fact that it is, it is Family Violence Prevention Awareness Month as well, in the, in the month of Movember. So to that extent, I decided not to grow a mustache. I decided to grow a wo-stash, because most of the victims of domestic violence happen to be women and children, and they tend to get trapped in those situations. So instead of just wearing purple or doing something pretty, I'm doing something real ugly and putting it on my face with my wo-stash. So when you see me do this, I'm making a reference to the ladies who otherwise, you know, are not doing as well as, as they could be in these types of situations, and also supporting the people suffering from cancer. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen, I think. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know where to go with that. Well, you know what, then we'll just briefly turn our attention to the calendar. In addition to some of the meetings that were already highlighted by other members of council that were in attendance, there were a couple that I was the only one attending at. I had the pride of representing the city to bring greetings to the retirement party for Kelly Sutherland. Many members, I'm sure all members of our community, recognize Kelly Sutherland as a world-class chuck wagon racer. But more than that, I think Kelly has really put Grand Prairie on the provincial scene for longer than I have been alive. And so at the, at the event, I had, I had sort of an epiphany that there's a close tie between Kelly and our own former councillor Helen Rice, both representing Grand Prairie on the provincial scene in their own unique way, but really demonstrating that Grand Prairie can compete with anybody out there. And Kelly has certainly done that. It was a pleasure to represent the city of Grand Prairie, considering how well he's represented our community over the years. On Monday, the 30th, I had the opportunity to go to a mayor's conference. This was the grade four class at Ivy Macklin. This is the third year in a row where they've had a mayor's conference. They invite mayors from all across the province to come, and they each present a fact about their community. All of the mayors are from that grade four class, so it's actually a very short travel distance. But it's a pleasure to be the mayor of Grand Prairie and welcome all these other mayors from across the provinces. The students do some practical learning as they sort of represent these communities and speak as though they were the mayor of those communities. So it's a pleasure to be invited there. And then on Wednesday, the 1st, I had the opportunity to be at East Link Center, where the Family Violence Prevention Coalition hosted a proclamation reading and a kickoff of Family Violence Prevention Month. It was my pleasure to make that proclamation on behalf of the city and do that jointly with the Reva County Reeve Land and Boat Pre. And with that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.